Dalton when residents on Big Dalton have parties. Where will overflow vehicles park? Is there any extra parking provided within the new proposed community? And where will these vehicles be allowed to park? Thank you for letting me express some of my concerns.
Thank you very much.
Ready?
Yeah.
My name is Berta Bert Saavedra and I've lived on Jeremy Street for 16 years. And since I moved in, that lot has been 90% vacant. And in some cases, we had dust storms where the dust would just come and overwhelm the residents on Jeremy. The flyer depicting Paradise Pacific Villa as a gated residential community with 47 beautiful detached homes with two car garages will bring at least 100 more vehicles and 100 more drivers into the already congested Pacific Avenue. On any given weekend, 80 vehicles back up for two blocks traveling south because of the metro link, traveling to and from Los Santos or San Bernardino. On Main Street facing north, only one block is available for the same process. Traffic congestion is at its best. This is happening presently. What will be done to mitigate the congestion of more than 100 permanent residents occupying the 47 detached homes and garages? When developers come into a city and build a single-family home and/or mixed-use structures, what benefit does the community garner? There should be some consideration to the current residents or nonprofit organizations already in the area. This is called "community benefits." And they are in order, not just for building tax credits or for increasing the tax base of a city, but also for the future residents coming to knowing the city better and also the congestion that already exists. Long-term planning is possible solution and not reacting to developers' wishes without consideration for long-term, long-time residents. Who speaks on the city's behalf? Outreach is in order other than a planning hearing. And I turned in a four-page document to the planning department, and one of which my concerns is the grading. When the houses were built directly in back of where I live, because that was another vacant lot, the grading was, that lot grades down higher. So a gully was created between my cinder block wall and the new cinder block wall that was put up. And I have pictures that I can turn to you to see. I have had possums breeding in that, what I call a gully. I've also had feral cats breeding in that environment. And because of the mosquito infestation in the San Gabriel Valley, there's a possibility of mosquito infestation also there because of water accumulation. So that was not taken care of when those developers put in the two-story structures in back of my house. If they're going to do the same because of the grading situation, it should be looked into prior to that. I asked the planning department to check into the grading and they said that it was too expensive for the developer to create the report. So they were going to wait until after all considerations were made before they determined the grading of that one property coming into the other. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How's it going? My name is Raul Silva. I live at 3825 Big Dalton Avenue. And I'm going to be one of the affected property owners that lives right next to that proposed project that you guys are so willing to do and hurry up and get it over with. If you didn't have that name tag there, I would assume if I just walked in there that you work for the developer and not the city. I think you guys forget too often that you guys are supposed to represent us, our voice, people that are not too familiar with the laws and procedures. And we depend on you guys to look out for us. And I think so many times, you guys just think about the revenue and the money that money's going to bring in, the taxes, and you guys just get all giddy. You look a little bit too happy about this. You guys expressed tonight that this developer has another current project going. Is that correct? Is that on the record? Is that true? If it is, why don't we wait and see how that works out first before you guys are ready to break ground over here already? I'm saying not to approve it. I'm just saying, slow down, pump your brakes. What's the hurry? If the lot's been vacant for 10 years, what's another six months going to wait? What's another year going to hurt? Let the developer finish that project, see what negative impact it has on the community, and then, oh yeah, you know what? Those concerned citizens, they have legitimate concern. Not, oh, well, hey, bro, ground here, let's break ground here, let's break ground here real quick, come on, let's do it. You can't do that. You can't do that because I'm telling you right now, if you guys follow me to my house, you're going to find my house, there's cars everywhere that don't belong on my street. They belong to the condominium that's located next to my house. And I addressed it before, it's not, it is a public parking for everybody, but my concern is not overnight parking, what these residents are doing. And I do feel bad for them because they have a little tiny garage. What they're doing is they're coming and dumping their vehicles on our street, and it's not overnight. They're leaving it for weeks on end. And we call, you know, parking enforcement, they're like this. Hey, public street, there's nothing we can, I can't even park in front of my house most of the time because there's a car from the condominiums there. Now, what's going to happen over there? The average household has three, four cars, five vehicles sometimes because the kids live with their parents, the adults live with their parents nowadays. So in the perfect world, yeah, there'd be two cars for every house. But realistically, and you guys know, that's not the case. All I'm saying is just pump the brakes, don't be so eager and happy to pass this. Let's see how that project goes first, and then wait a couple months, a year, and then, oh yeah, you know. But I don't know, sometimes I wonder, I attended my first council meeting last month, and a lot of the citizens that came were elderly people that really pay attention because I guess they're retired, so they have time and they read stuff.
Mr. Silva, you're now at your three-minute limit.
And my point is that they were really angry and being real disrespectful towards the city council.
Mr. Silva.
I didn't understand why, but I'm beginning to understand why because they're being ignored. When they come here and talk to you guys, you guys don't really listen to them. You just kind of go through the motions.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairperson, my name is Jim Powers, and I'm representing the Pacific Villa Development. And I would just like to say that we're excited about this development. We're very excited to be back in the city of Baldwin Park and working with the city of Baldwin Park. We'd like to commend staff that did an outstanding job, came up with a lot of improved design guidelines that we incorporated, and we very much appreciate all of the hard work that came from staff. We're here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. We have our traffic engineer and our civil engineer here also, so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Jose Molina, and I reside at Big Dalton also. I'm along with this gentleman that just came up prior to this guy who's just interested in money. You guys are cramping up 47 homes in a lot that could take, what, five, six homes maximum? Plus, you're putting two-car garage. With the cost of homes nowadays, you don't have one couple living in a home, you have two or three couples living in a home so they can pay that house. And that's two or three couples have three, four, or five cars. Where are they going to park those cars? You're putting two-car garages. What you need is at least five parking spaces for each home, so you guys don't cram up all the streets. You come out at night, there is no parking anywhere because, like the gentleman said, the condos, I guess that's the same problem they're having because rent and homes are so expensive that you have two or three families living together. And that's why you have all these cars out on the street. I don't think it's fair. You guys are not considering us, and it's all about the money and it's all about the taxes. And also, if you're building these homes, are my taxes going to go up? Because I'm already paying $5,000 a year in taxes. I don't know how much money I can pay. You know, it's outrageous. It's truly outrageous that you guys don't care about the little people. It's all about the big people, it's all about the money. You guys need to consider us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no further interest, I will now close public communication. And are there any concerns or questions from the commissioners? Mr. Powers, would you come up, please? Are there any concerns?
I have a question. I just want to address the guest parking. Do you guys have guest parking?
We have 14 guest parking spaces provided.
Where are they located?
Throughout the development, you can see some up near the upper right-hand corner, and then some across on the other part of the Loop Street, and then a couple there. There's four there, there's two more up there, and then I think that's all the total of the guest parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as been stated many times this evening, one of the major concerns is regards to parking and traffic congestion. With the 47 units and only 14 guest parking, where would there be for guest parking? Because if one of these homes had a birthday party on a Saturday, pretty much 14 spots would be taken. So my concern, as far as the design for additional parking.
Well, I think that, you know, there's always that opportunity that someone could have a large birthday party. Next door to this property is a church that, other than when they have their services there, it's unused, and they have a large parking lot. And we're proposing that there would be CCRs and a homeowners association that would be very strict on the parking regulations. Everybody would have to be able to park two cars within their garage. And if you were going to have a large party, a suggestion might be that they would contact the church, ask if they could rent some parking over there because, again, most of the week it's completely empty. Every time I try to go by and contact them, no one's there. So that might be an opportunity for some additional parking. Very nice people at the church, and I think they would love to have, you know, a little additional income, so.
Additional concern which I have, the traffic on Pacific. At this point, there is no turning lane into the actual facility. And if someone is turning, well, heading south on Pacific and making a left-hand turn into the complex, maybe an accident, but I'm just looking at the congestion at this point. Are there plans for reevaluation as far as the traffic for that location?
One of the things that will help to eliminate issues on Pacific, and it won't eliminate all of the issues with regards to traffic, but because you don't have a gate at the front of the development, you actually have a large area to pull into so that people making left-hand turns, instead of waiting for the gate to open, they have a very large area that they can pull in, and then the gates are off to either the left or the right side. And so you won't have cars that will have to wait there for the gate to open. They'll be able to pull in, and that will help to eliminate some of those issues. And again, there's two lanes going in each direction, so if someone, you know, had their signal on, people that are coming toward, or driving towards the freeway would be able to move over to the other lane. We've had a traffic study done, and it's been submitted to the city, they've reviewed it. And, you know, there's going to be some times when the train is pulling out of the station and the arms are down across Pacific, but that doesn't last very long. And that would only be, you know, during the real high-volume times when people are going to work or coming back home. The rest of the time, I've spent a lot of time on that property and in the surrounding neighborhoods, and it's really not bad.
The other concern which I have is actually those who are coming out of the complex. Would it be stipulated that they will only make a right-hand turn coming out? Because if they're trying to make a left-hand turn, again, there's an issue as far as the flow of traffic and, again, possible congestion there.
As far as the traffic engineer has proposed, it's not restricted to just a ride-out. And I've, again, been on that property with the soils engineers and several other people that we've had do work there. And coming out, most of the time, it's very easy to make a left-hand turn. There are times when the flow is heavy, that they'll have to wait for a few minutes for the signals to turn red and then pull out at that time. But most of the time during the day, it's not, really not bad.
Well, the primary concerns which I have, because during the peak hours when school, for not only the high school but for the elementary school, when parents are dropping their kids off, the flow of traffic on Pacific and Big Dalton is extremely heavy. And right now, even the signal at Big Dalton does not reduce some of the traffic issues. And again, that's a concern that I have in regards to this here.
And again, we have our traffic engineer here, and he would be happy to talk to those issues if you still have concerns about that.
I do. Would you bring him up, please?
Good evening. I'm Thomas Wheat with TJW Engineering, and we worked with the consultant in the city on the project, and we prepared the traffic impact study for the project.
Thank you. The traffic study, what timeframes were they made in regards to the congestion for the front of this complex?
We followed the CEQA requirements and the city requirements, looked at the AM and PM peak hours, so that's seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the PM. We based it on the IT standards for trip generation and looked at those two peak periods for five intersections in every area.
And the results were?
Results were, for 47 homes, it's primarily, for the course of the day, it's about 450 cars, trips, that's in-and-out trips. In the AM peak, I believe, between the peak hour, which is maybe eight to nine, 7:30 to 8:30, it's about 30 trips, 35 trips. In the PM, it's about 47 trips. So those are in-and-out of the driveway.
So that's in-and-out of the driveway for the homeowners coming out of the complex, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Now, my concern was not so much the homeowners coming out of the complex, but the traffic from the other residents outside of the complex.
Correct. Pacific Avenue, I think, is labeled as a collector's street in the city. It's two lanes, the four lanes, two lanes in each direction handle that traffic. We also did a 20/30 analysis, and based on the general plan, and that collector can maintain that traffic. There is quite a bit of traffic, there's 900 cars, but that's separated over two lanes. The driveway is located near Big Dalton, but it's between Puente and Pacific. There, at those intersections, they do have left-turn pockets. And what we have in front of our site is just a double yellow down the center with a little bit wider lanes next to the curb. And that helps facilitate right-in, right-out. I see your issue with the left turns in that number-one lane. There is no turnpocket there, and I think if you were to put a turnpocket, I think you would have to lose a little bit of the parking in front of the residential homes that front Pacific. But it's something that the staff could look at. If it's red curb, then maybe we have a little bit of extra space that we can maybe put a two-way left-turn lane. Because we are equidistant, a little bit closer to Big Dalton, that it's a possibility. And I haven't looked at the conditions of approval if they require restriping to put a two-way left-turn lane there or not. But it's something that we could look at. The number-two lanes, which are the ones closest to the curb, are fairly wide. And if there's no parking, that space could be utilized for a turnpocket possibility.
And again, that's a primary concern for the residents right now because there is no parking on Pacific at this time. Was there any type of recommendation for, because you have a turning lane, a left-hand turn lane off of Big Dalton, and then the left-hand turning lane on, God, I can't think of the street.
Puente?
Puente.
Correct.
But if there's, with the flow of traffic and additional, or if there's non-additional turning lane there, you're during that peak time in the morning, and the reason why I focus on the morning, because I'm in that traffic. And it can be very heavy. And it can be a little bit, you know, dangerous in regards to, you know, with the kids walking to school, parents taking them to school, and it can be a little worrisome. And like I said, it is a concern. And I think that should be looked into a little bit more as far as how to incorporate a better flow of traffic if this program, if this product, if this is passed, how we can work with from Big Dalton and Puente. How we can work that out and get something better suited for the amount of homes that are going to be going in there and the existing traffic that is currently going up and down Pacific. Okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
Chair, I just want to make a point that I am also concerned with the amount of units that are being put in there and the limited amount of space for parking for visitors. 14 is just too small. And I would actually like to consider a reevaluation to see if there can be a couple of those units taken out and put parking in those particular units on both east and west side of the properties. We are the voice of the community, and I want to make that a point for them to understand that we are listening to their concerns, which are also our concerns. We are supposed to express ourselves and let you guys know what we see and what we see fit. And in this particular situation, I see that there's nothing available, like Ms. Berta was saying, for the community that's going to be existing there. There's nothing for them, the kids, or do they have, there's no swimming pool in there, there's no basketball courts in there. There's nothing for kids to actually be playing around in there unless they're going to be driving around in a fire lane, riding their bikes. That's another one of my concerns. I honestly think there should be a reconsideration of replanning this particular project and making sure that this traffic mitigation gets taken care of before we make a decision on this. Thank you.
Go ahead.
There are a couple of small park areas within the development that kids could play on, and then because this is a gated community, your traffic will be posted that there could be kids playing within the private street area. And so you won't have people coming in from other areas that aren't familiar with the fact that you will have kids playing there. So the homeowners here, because it's gated, I think will honor that, and it would be posted that you would be required to have much slower speeds within the development.
The streets, they're fire lanes, so they all be red-curbed? So there would definitely be no parking on the fire lanes, is that correct?
That's correct. And the plans have all been reviewed by LA County Fire, and they've approved the design.
Okay, so as far as the, because I was looking at the turning radius is about a 45-degree angle, so if a fire truck were to go in there, they would be able to make those turns at the top of the, at the top of the units?
Yes, they definitely would. All developments within the city of Baldwin Park and every city has to be approved by the fire department. So they have plan checkers that go through to make sure that their units can make all of those turns successfully.
The street width is 26 feet? Okay, are there any other questions from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, I will now close public communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Prior to asking for a vote, are there any questions by any commissioners on any of this information? Okay. At this point, I will now accept a motion. Do we have a motion not to accept, a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion not to accept at the present time until everything gets reevaluated.
Is that a motion to refer it to staff for reevaluation? Or is that a no vote?
That's a no vote for the project to move forward.
So at this point, you wish to refer it back to staff to address the concerns of traffic congestion and parking?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's, again, for clarification purposes, if we're going to vote no, then we're going to have to redraft all the findings and come back with negative findings. If what you're instead saying is to refer it to staff, come back with an alternate plan, that would make it probably a little easier, rather than just voting to no.
Okay.
At least it will give staff time to come back. I guess part of your concerns are more parking spaces?
More parking spaces and something for the community, not just homes. I mean, there has to be something, a common area for people to have, to be able to go to, I don't know, a community center or a computer lab for the kids, something, not just a bunch of homes all bunched in in one area.
Okay, let me see if I got this. Okay, so your motion is to refer this back, refer this agenda item back to staff for reevaluation for the reconsideration of parking and traffic congestion? Okay. Are we good with that?
Yeah, including your Yeah, including your comments?
Yes. Again, looking at the, uh, traffic situation on Pacific, okay?
And would, do you wanna come back at the next, uh, commission meeting?
Yes, if we can bring this on the, uh, next commission meeting in
October.
October? Will be able to get that done?
Chair, my staff, my recommendation to you would be to continue it date specific, so that we don't have to notice it again. If for some reason we are unable to, through working with the, um, applicant, come to an amicable resolution, it will be on that agenda item, however, there may be a request at that time from staff to continue it, saying we're still working with the applicant, so on and so forth. What I'm really trying to, um, avoid is staff having to renotice it again, um, because that does take a considerable amount of time.
That's acceptable to me, as far as that's concerned, so we won't have to start from square one. Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Any objections? Okay. Seeing no objection, the motion passes with the, this item being returned back to staff with the items to be reviewed and to be placed on the agenda for October?
October twenty-sixth.
Okay, October twenty-sixth, and to avoid us having to start from square one again. All right?
And I'm sorry, Chair, Commissioner Musial, you made the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, please.
Um, Chair, we have no, um, reports of officer, so, um, I will move into camp, commission and staff communications, and this is a verbal update on the proposed, um, Irwindale's material recovery facility and transfer station, um, located at twenty-two-hundred Arrow Highway and the applicant is Athens Services. Um, staff and the outside attorney that we have hired are continually monitoring this situation. Um, there was some action on behalf of the Irwindale Oversight Board at their, that's like what redevelopment morphed into, um, last Thursday that we're talking to the attorney about, so it's in the legal system now, so things are moving slowly, um, but I am still suggesting that we keep this on every planning commission agenda so I can keep you updated, even if thing, even if I don't have a physical report. So, and this concludes my verbal report.
Thank you. And that looks like it concludes all the items. At this point, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
A motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, meetings adjourned. Thank you.